This is Tehachapi Pod. Sit back and relax as Key, Cory, Greg and Ashley talk about what's happening in and around Tehachapi.
It's Tehachapi time. Key Budge, Ashley Whitmore, Greg Garrett today. How are you all doing?
Doing well. How are you, Key?
I'm doing good.
Yeah, doing good. It's good to have you guys in here. I grabbed you walking down the hallway said, we need to do council recap. We had a council meeting here to kind of end of May, our third week of May, and we took care of some business and we want to explain to the public what we do.
It's important. If you can't attend the meeting, we're certainly here to help you understand the, the business of the public and this is just one of those avenues. So, good stuff.
Yeah, it was a nice council meeting. It was well attended. Part of that was because we did some proclamations to kick things off. We recognized and proclaimed May to be Community Action Month and we had our friends from the Community Action Partnership Program come up, CAP-K. They're centrally located in Bakersfield, but they actually provide services here to Tehachapi. Our senior center being one of the recipients of, from our food bank. We proclaimed it to be Community Action Month.
Yeah, I had no idea they did that. And they just actually talked about having a facility right now that's, I want to say 20,000 square feet, and they're increasing that to 60,000 square feet so they can accommodate more of the donations that are coming in. And they did that all through fundraising.
Yeah, they're a good group. They actually had a really emotional video of a gentleman that was volunteering for a while and now he works there and the, and the different parts of his job where he's actually been able to enhance and, and make people's lives better. So that was, that was a good little 90 second video.
It was nice. And Pritika Ram, the Chief Business Development Officer and Denise Bosher's, a new CAP-K Board Member, were nice enough to come up and receive that proclamation and share a little bit more about what they do. And that was kind of a nice way to kick off the meeting.
Yeah, good people doing good work.
Yep. And then we move right into hashtag love Tehachapi. This group has been recognized by Kern Cog last year and they went out once again without being asked and cleaned up our community. They had 50 to 100 volunteers and they also went into small businesses this month and said, thank you to our local mom and pops for doing business here and choosing Tehachapi to call home.
I think they're my local fave, if you will. I mean, we have amazing nonprofits, that's for sure. All of them are outstanding. But these guys, you know, they do a lot of stuff in the public, but they do a lot of items, different projects that are never talked about. They're just behind the scenes making Tehachapi a stronger community. So I really applaud love Tehachapi.
Yeah, they're not looking for the accolades.
They're not.
But
I think this was our idea or your idea. Let's, let's honor them. And you know what? I'm all about that. I know the mayor is also, but there's so many, it's just a daily, you know, giving back is a daily, should be a daily occurrence.
Yes.
Do they have a Facebook page or anything like that if people want to join?
They do. It's hashtag love Tehachapi.
That makes it easy.
And Denise Madden is now leading the charge. Nicole Hamblin had been doing it for the past few years and she's now bringing in Denise to kind of lead the thing. This was her first project day, so we thought we'd recognize Denise in the efforts because she did reach out and contact us and always ask, hey, we want to do this, want to make sure it's not going to be a problem. And they just, they're very well coordinated and they want to make sure that whatever they do doesn't require any extra effort or help. They want to do it all themselves.
Yeah, their, their, their approach is the, the correct approach. So if I, they're on Facebook, but are they on InstaSnap also?
No.
No?
That's, that's your own private social media.
That's probably why I never get any.
Never anything in the feed there.
You, you might be ahead of the curve. It might be the next one that's coming out.
Might be something there, right?
Greg Garrett's InstaSnap.
Trademark it quick.
But then we rolled into taking care of some business. It was nice to do the community, take a look and acknowledge the community. And then it was time to take care of city business.
Yeah. So the first thing, we have public comment in the, in the very beginning of the meeting. Corey Torres, he's the General Manager of Tehachapi Valley Recreation Parks District, TVRPD, we call it, short. He shared with us that the district will be receiving award for the new skate park down by West Park. Cory shared with us that they're being honored for the skate park, which is really a good thing. So the City of Tehachapi was participating or did participate in that project and we donated $175,000 towards the completion of that park. So we're very excited to be partners with TVRPD in, in projects that matter, that make a difference in our city, in our community.
I know the park is well used. See lots of kids out there on their scooters, skateboards, inline skates. Very popular.
Yeah, good stuff. Good stuff for sure. And then into the, into the business, we had several public hearings. So the state of California requires us to host public hearings for our landscape and lighting districts, or we call them LLDs or sometimes LMDs for short. And some of the new neighborhoods, let's say the Alta Estates, Heritage Oaks, Industrial Park, the Bailey Court off of Tehachapi Boulevard, they have landscape lighting districts. And what that means is they are self taxing themselves for the maintenance of that landscaping and the streetlights and the drainage, if there are any improvements, drainage improvements. And so that, what that does is protects the, the existing homeowner so that their taxes or their general fund money doesn't subsidize the new guy, right? That's appropriate. And we completely agree with that. But we have to go through this process every year and host a public hearing. Of course, nobody protests. Why would anybody protest, hey, take out my landscaping, turn off my, my streetlights, you know, let's let Warrior Park die. Happily, they, they say yes every year and it's a good thing, right? We go through that process. It's a public process and we continue to maintain those beautiful, beautiful areas of our city.
And a lot of the people that move into those areas specifically move in because it looks so beautiful.
That's right. So that was a good thing. And then the next thing, we just moved right along into several items. So the state of California now, again, more bureaucracy, but so they're requiring all cities and counties and districts now to create CEQA documents. We talk about CEQA a lot, Key. And this is not a giant CEQA document like Walmart, let's say. But certainly there are several forms and steps within the CEQA process. And we must go to the city council now. And if we have a CEQA document that is exempt, say if we want to repave a road, an existing road, we still have to create a CEQA document and tell the state it's exempt. So we do that and we've been doing that actually for the last couple of meetings. And so we had four of them on the agenda for Monday. One of them was Brentwood Pedestrian Facilities Project. And what that is, is some additional sidewalks that we're going to be installing on Brentwood between Curry and Oakwood. And that's for, for students walking to school. It's for people, you know, taking a stroll in the evening. So when that neighborhood was originally built, there were no sidewalks. And so we'll be installing sidewalks on Brentwood from Curry to Oakwood. And hopefully that'll happen at least this summer or maybe early spring. But we're getting all the paperwork in order. So the next one we talked about was a CEQA document for repaving Valley Boulevard. This is a big deal. We've been working on this for some time. It's a large project. It's quite expensive. Valley Boulevard is well used. We're going out to bid with this project in the, in about a month or so, and we will be repaving Valley Boulevard. Not just repaving, but really rebuilding Valley Boulevard. And that boundary is from Curry to Beach. So kind of curb to curb, Curry to Beach along Valley. Lots of traffic control. The goal is, and I think we talked about this before, the goal is to complete that project before school starts again in the fall, right? That is our ultimate goal. Lots of variables that come into play. But so that project is in the queue also for this summer. And then Tehachapi Boulevard Bike Lane Fence Project, this was another CEQA document that we had to put together. That is to install a kind of a safety barrier, a fence along the bike path on Tehachapi Boulevard that we installed a couple of years ago to keep the bicyclists away from the train tracks, but also to keep the railroad from using the bike path as a road. That's going to be from Hayes to Stuber. So think about the new bike path along Tehachapi Boulevard. A nice wooden rail fence, maybe the, the cream plastic, we're not sure yet, but something that is going to be a barrier keeping bicyclists and, and the railroad separated. And the fourth project that we put together, a CEQA document was for the sidewalk connection project. And that means curb gutter sidewalk between, visualize Tehachapi Boulevard between the transit center, the park and ride on the north side and J&amp;H Automotive. So there's an area there where it's open. It just goes to dirt. It kind of shrinks down from, from two lanes to one lane if you're going east or west. So we're going to widen Tehachapi Boulevard, put in curb gutter and sidewalk between the transit center, the park and ride and J&amp;H Automotive. So that's going to be a great little project.
And if anybody ever wants to look at the maps, we always have the full agenda on the website. So they can go there and the maps are located on there. If you want a better visual idea of where all these projects are taking place.
Great comment, Ashley. Yeah. Or call us. We say that a lot. Call us and we'll walk you through the whole process. So
Absolutely.
For sure. Some of the things that we have to do with our SB1 money, so Senate Bill 1, which is our gas tax money, the budget that we receive every year from the state of California, we have to put together a list key of all the projects that we project that will be done next year. So next year, we're looking at, and this could change a little bit, but next year, we're looking at Heritage Oaks. We'll slurry seal the Heritage Oaks neighborhood. Again, I won't, I won't name every street. I think Ashley's comment was a good one. If you want to know, go to the city council agenda, the packet, or call us. And then Alta Estates will be slurry sealing Alta Estates, which is up there by Warrior Park. And then some local downtown streets. Again, we've been, we've been marching through our town with slurry seal in the last couple of weeks. And it's so nice. We have Alan, Michael, Brett, Lois, lots of parking lots, a lot of the streets that go south from Valley Boulevard have been slurry sealed. And that's to enhance and protect that existing asphalt. So some really good projects that we've been working on.
I thought it was a great comment or question from one of the council members last night regarding the slurry seals. One of the questions was, why are we doing Alta Estates? That's a newer area. But the comment back being that, look, we need to maintain our roads that are good because the cost that it will, it will, you know, be upon the city in order to just rebuild those streets is exponentially more than what it costs to slurry and just keep and maintain that road.
Yeah, there's a method behind the madness. That's for sure. So.
And we've talked with Jay and Dawn a couple of times about rehabilitation, resurfacing and the maintenance, the, the three different areas that they look at when with, with the roads and they try to make sure that there's maintenance done to add life and longevity. And that's critical. Otherwise, like you said, Ashley, it's, if you've got to replace it, it's going to cost, I think Jay said it was pennies on the dollar, you know, to do a slurry seal as comparison to, to tearing it up. So this is all about having that long term plan that Dawn and Jay go through. They look at all the roads, all of the roads in the community, have them prioritized.
That's right.
And then that's, we're going to do some more roadwork, more asphalt is going down in downtown this summer with F, E, D. They're all going to, portions of those that have been kind of torn up. Weather is really just beating the heck out of it.
We're going to have the biggest summer, I think, ever on record with the city of Tehachapi for maintenance and improvements in our city. Not just downtown, right? We talk about downtown a lot, certainly, but neighborhoods that have been neglected for many, many years. We've been putting together these plans and these budgets for some time. And now that we can really start rolling, we've got some momentum happening here. And our Public Works Department, they're out every day. As we speak, actually, right now, they're, they're replacing some drive approaches, concrete drive approaches. So it's not just that we're, you know, handing out contracts to contractors. Our Public Works Department are boots on the ground also doing a very similar work with, with concrete.
The area that they happen to be working this week, Green Street prior to Farmer's Market opening, putting in some more safety bollards, making it the most safe. When we shut down a street, we can make sure the public feels comfortable, safe, redoing some of the sidewalk, where some tree roots had lifted up some areas. So it's going to be very nice.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely. And the last thing we did, the city council approved a contract for a new police chief, Richard Standridge. He's got many years of experience. He comes to the city of Tehachapi from the city of Bishop and he'll be starting on June 26th. He's a great man, great leader. He's met most of our employees already and he's ready to just jump in and take over the reins, Tehachapi Police Department. You know, we have a community police department. We have the safest city in Kern and we're going to just continue to take that and move it forward and shoot for the stars. So I'm really excited for the new chief to start here next month.
There was a project that the council approved that we closed, the Dennison Water.
Yeah, a notice of completion. So remember, we've talked about this also a couple of times, Key, and that is we installed a new water line. It's a main water line. It's a very large water line along Dennison Road between the high school going south to Highline. And so that water line was installed many years ago, been giving us fits, leaking, you know, busting apart and, you know, our maintenance was just going through the roof and the inconvenience and then the potential health issues. So we were able to replace that water line this last winter, over the winter, springtime. And the, the construction is done. The contractor met all of the contract requirements. So we issued a notice of completion, which is something that I sign and it's notarized. And then the contractor can get his final 10% retainer. We hold that back for a certain amount of time, just to make sure that everything is, is working appropriately. And then of course, we're in a warranty period also after that. But we're very happy with that contractor and that project.
You mentioned that some of the parking lots and some of the, the roads had been slurry sealed recently. Also, Pinion is very close to, to opening that section that, by the high school.
That's right.
And that is, that's a big deal. And they did that very quickly.
Yeah. So Griffith Contractors were, were fortunate to have them bid projects for us locally and they got in there and, and just got it done really quick. And so it, the roads installed, it's not been painted, the, you know, the white lines and the center stripe, those sorts of things. They have to have a certain amount of time between asphalt being laid and then they fog seal it and this and that, and this and that. But I would expect, Key, that we'll open Pinion Extension between Heritage Oaks and, and Dennison in the next week or two. First part in June, I would expect at the latest. And then that will change our traffic patterns, of course, for the better. Allow more opportunities for people to traverse east and west throughout our, our valley. So good stuff.
Very good stuff.
That was a one point, almost $1.4 million grant that we received for that project. So we're very excited about opening new roads for people.
And then currently we have restriping going on throughout town.
All over town.
Yeah. So
All over town.
I saw the crews out and they were working. They've ground down some of the old paint on some of the streets and they're out there remarking. So we'll have fresh paint on our streets.
Yeah, can't wait.
Yeah.
It's being done as we speak. So those are, those are things that really excite me. You know, new asphalt and new paint, that makes me happy. Lots of events coming up, Key, in the next week or so. I've got a quite, quite a list here. You probably have something similar.
Yeah, I've got a few as well. And I know, Ashley, in your department, your team, they handle these special event requests that come in. It's summertime.
Oh, this is the heavy season. Yeah, that's for sure.
Almost every weekend we'll have something going on between now through, at least through the Mountain Festival, the end of August.
Absolutely. A lot of people assume those are all city events. We, you know, approve those events, but a lot of those come from Chamber of Commerce, Parks and Rec.
TBAA.
Yeah.
All these different groups.
Nonprofits. I mean, and the list goes on and on and on. I think we're very fortunate to be destination for festivals. It brings life. It brings happiness. It brings revenue to businesses. And downtown Tehachapi is really the spot to be. And even, you know, outside downtown, but you know, there's a lot of focus on downtown during the summer, for sure. It's just a beautiful quaint downtown.
Coming up on Saturday, May 20th, a couple of things. The Household Hazardous Drop Off, we get that twice a month out at Tehachapi Landfill because our people do so well at going out and responding every time they open. So we are the only landfill that gets two of these events every month. So the next
And so how does, I've never been. So, you know, kind of embarrassed to say, but I've never been to one of these. So you, you load up your car, your truck, your trailer with household hazardous waste. So that would be paint, that would be aerosols, those sorts of things. And you head out to the landfill, which is just east of Lehigh.
Yes.
And you pull in and you tell the guy what you've got and they have some area that's kind of go over here. Is that what?
Once you go through the main gates, you, you, you go up the hill, they send you over into the recycling center. And once you get in there, there's, it usually splits into two lines. They will remove the items from your vehicle.
So they have employees that are assisting you.
Kern County Public Works.
Okay. Cause they don't want you to throw it in the trash can. They don't want you to take it to the landfill and just put it in with all the paper and
Correct.
Other waste. They want to quarantine it and do something
Exactly.
Else with it.
Exactly. So they separate all the different chemicals and things that you, you bring up that fit into their, their category. And you go to kernpublicworks.com and there's a list of all the things that you can bring. They do a great job. They're very quick and they remove the items, separate it, and then you just drive on off. It's that easy. And that'll be 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And it's every other, we get it twice a month. So every other Saturday here in, at our Tehachapi landfill.
People are doing the right thing in Tehachapi.
Yeah.
If it's twice a month, then that's, that's a big deal.
Yeah. And then over Bright Lake, welcoming back the fishing derby.
Yeah, pretty excited about that. Corey Torres also mentioned that they have stocked, it will be stocking tagged fish. And they've made some improvements. They've graded the roads and different things. So looking forward to going out there and seeing the, the nice new fresh area that they've kind of springtime cleaning.
Yeah. And they set those tagged fish, you can fish for up to a month if you are registered for the fishing derby. And there, I want to say a thousand dollars per tagged fish.
Wouldn't it be a bummer if you caught that fish and you didn't register?
Yeah.
So you need to register. Is there a cost? Do you know?
There's a, there's a slight fee.
Small fee.
You go to tvrpd.org.
Okay.
And get all the information.
Okay, good. And I know that there was a podcast earlier that I was listening to with Corey and some of his employees. And they were talking about some donations and some prizes. Tractor Supply donated a kayak and a bunch of other stuff. And I'm sure lots of other organizations and businesses stepped up, but
Yes.
He said that this is the biggest year of prizes.
It's been four years in the making.
Oh, yeah, right.
This is the first time.
People can register what, up until the morning of, I believe.
Yeah, they'll be out there. Brenda and Taylor will be out there like 6:00 AM, taking the last minute registrants. But camping's already booked. They've already sold out for the weekend.
Oh, shoot.
And then we head over to Tuesday, the 23rd. We're going to have our Earth Day makeup, if you will. It'll be a cleanup day here in Tehachapi. We've got numerous volunteer groups, businesses that are going to send out volunteers.
Almost too many to mention. You know, we were going over the list and I thought, wow, that's a big deal. Cause they was canceled because of weather, is it right?
Yes. Yes. So it's, and we, same thing happened last year. And we coordinate with Tehachapi Cummings County Water District because it's, will focus on the antelope run bike walk path. So part of that is theirs, part of that is ours. They will be down in the trenches, down in the rocks, cleaning out the shrubbery and debris. We will have litter removal along the trail and also along Valley and Tehachapi Boulevard and possibly even the 202 if we have enough volunteers.
So the antelope run is owned and maintained by Tehachapi Cummings County Water District. It's actually part of the storm drain, you know, flood control system. But the city many years ago with the partnership, we were able to install the bike path, which we're very happy about. And you know, Key, that bike path goes all the way from Walmart to Warrior Park.
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure if most people are realize that, but that's a, that's a large bike path. And then it goes south, actually into the, into the Tehachapi Cummings area. They have a, a small dam up there also. And then of course, Freedom Trail out in Golden Hills. So we're getting quite the network. And we just talked about the Tehachapi Boulevard bike path earlier. So we're, we're getting a lot of areas where you can bike or you can walk in this community. So super cool stuff. And we're maintaining it and the people are helping us.
Yeah.
Community volunteers.
And this year, the community, several of these volunteer groups, you know, with, and, and I say volunteer groups, it's, it's actually business led. Tehachapi Area Association of Realtors, they step up big time and all the realtors come out.
They do every year.
They do. And so I really should acknowledge them because they could be out trying to sell homes. But they're out helping make their community nicer and cleaner, along with Salvation Army and some other groups. So that'll be, that'll be nice. And then the next day, on Wednesday, the 24th, we're going to have our next blood drive. So Houchen Community Blood Bank is going to come up. We parked the buses over at Vineyard Church on Pinion, the healthcare district, ourselves and Houchen and Vineyard, we all work together, bringing the community in. Now it has grown, the blood drive has grown where they bring multiple buses, extra staff. They collect platelets, plasma, and also whole blood. So this, and all the blood products stay here in Kern County.
It's so positive. Yeah.
And you can sign up, you can go to our website or actually go to our social medias, or you can go to the Houchen Community Blood Bank website, hcbb.com and go to blood drives, find Tehachapi and you can reserve a time right there. Makes it
Every once in a while I see a license plate frame. It says, you know, one gallon, five gallon. I'm thinking, holy moly, what a commitment and how many lives have been saved by that person.
And then that's going to lead us into Memorial Day weekend. We've got a whole lineup.
Yeah. So Western Swing Out. So I think most people probably are familiar with this group, but they're coming up on May 26, 27, 28. And they're going to be downtown. They're partnering with the VFW, the American Legion. There's going to be a car show at the, the park and ride there on the Boulevard. So lots of activities downtown with the Western Swing Out.
That is a ticketed event. So I don't know if they're sold out or not, but you can check out their website. I think you just need to Google Western Swing Out to Hatchpee and that should pop up for you.
Yeah.
And they, they're downtown and the, you know, the businesses are able to sell different things and people shop and kind of stroll around. And it transforms our downtown into a different period.
Right.
Which is kind of cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. And then Memorial Day, right? That's going to be here before you know it. So lots of activities, Memorial Day weekend is a big time to kind of reflect. And I know a lot of people take short family vacations and different things. But on Monday, the actual Memorial Day, which is the 29th of May of this year, of course, there's going to be a Memorial Day Parade. That's going to be on F Street. It's, it's going to start down by Kmart, but not at the old Kmart building, a little to the east behind the hotels on F Street. So that parade starts at, at 10:00 AM and it's open to everybody. You don't have to necessarily register, pre-register. You can just come and you can bring your wagon. You can bring, you can walk, you can do whatever, but that parade will go along F Street and then through downtown, end up at Central Park. And they'll have, the American Legion will have a Memorial Day Ceremony at Central Park at 11 o'clock.
So
Looking forward to that.
Yeah.
The, the parade and the ceremony. It's important to honor our fallen.
Totally agree. Yeah. And that's being led by the American Legion. They've done a great job with that committee, putting this all together. So, and I've got to work very closely with them and TVRPD is the official host, but it's really what the veterans and all the veteran organizations want to do. And TVRPD and ourselves, we just say yes.
What else would you say? But yes, how can we help?
Memorial Day normally kicks off all our flags downtown.
Yeah. So I think that Public Works, so they'll probably put flags up next week. So we have the Adopt a Pole program. That's good call, Ashley.
Yeah.
So Adopt a Pole, which is our flags during the summer months and then our Christmas decorations during the holidays. So flags will start going up next, next week. And that's always beautiful. All the American flags. I mean, how could you not love that, right?
Absolutely.
Adopt a Pole, Ashley, that's, comes through your department. Your team puts that together.
They can come right on into City Hall, fill out an application and it adopts it for the year. You can either, if you're a business, you can sponsor it and have your business logo on there. Or if you want, you can dedicate it to somebody, somebody, you know, that was in the military or whomever you'd like. And we'll get that on a poll. You get to choose where, your location and that stays on for the year.
And we have anonymous donations or adoptions. We had one lady come in last year and she wanted to adopt like 20 plus poles. And we were flabbergasted. Of course, the answer's yes. But she said, I don't want to just take 20 poles. I, how about if you just put like, you know, I'll take four and, you know, just put the names of some fallen soldiers. I'm not sure if she knew them or she just kind of picked their names through the American Legion or what, but she was honoring servicemen and women. So kind of a loose story there, but that, it's really cool how people, again, just want to help. I mean, it's all about community in Tehachapi, whether you're cleaning antelope run or you're adopting a pole for a fallen soldier, or you're, you're participating in Memorial Day Parade or pouring concrete, you know, on a new driveway approach. It's all such good, positive stuff.
It is. And it's, it enhances our quality of life, the public safety, all these different things are just the side notes for the reasons why we, we do this. And the, the main reasons why we do this, but the side note is quality of life enhancements. We could probably rattle off communities that we've been to, that we just don't see this kind of activity or interaction between the community and the city government. And it shows.
And we're not perfect. I've said this before a million times. There's not all roses and daisies, that's for sure. But we tackle those problems together and we create solutions.
Agreed. All right. Anything in closing, we start to, we'll wrap things up.
Nothing for me.
Ashley, you're good.
Give me more notice next time. I'm not, just don't grab me. Cause I wasn't
Run into a meeting now.
I was kind of not on my game. I don't know. I was just kind of all over the place. So we'll see.
So many edits.
We'll see how this.
At the end of this, you won't even notice. Just the three of us will know what ended up on the editing room floor.
There you go.
All right, folks. We appreciate the time you spend with us and hopefully the information that we share is of value to you. If you've got a thought, a question, a suggestion, you can send it to us at media@tehachapi.cithall. If you've got a thought, a question, a suggestion, you can send it to us at media@tehachapycityhall.com. Again, we appreciate your time and we'll catch you again soon right here on Tehachapi Pod.
Tehachapi Pod is a conversation about Tehachapi, featuring the community members who make this such a special place to call home. If you have a question or a thought you'd like to share, email media@tehachapycityhall.com. Thank you to Gary Mizzola for sharing his song, This is Tehachapi.